Home meetings, where six to two please stand to the pledge allegiance.
The United States of America, two republics, stands foundation under God, with this law, with the teeth of the ass as well.
Roll call please.
Here.
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 Present. Here.
Present.
Present. Um, all trustees are here. So for the mayoral, mayoral report, there are a few, um, acknowledgements for this month. Uh, first, this is fire prevention week. There's also national cybersecurity awareness month, breast cancer awareness month, national Down syndrome awareness month, and there are two, uh, holidays, uh, for, Jewish holidays. One is Rosh Choshana, which was last week, and Friday is Yom Kippur. Uh, we have three, um, appointments, reap appointments to board positions. Um, so we have, one is reappoint Cherry Manning into the planning and zoning board with a term ending twenty twenty-six, reappoint Andrew Turner to the planning and zoning board with a term ending twenty twenty-seven, and reappoint Jeremy Harder to the police pension fund with the term ending twenty twenty-six. There's no objections. I'd entertain a motion and a second. Move.
Second.
Trustee Luther, second trustee Berman, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
I'm staying.
Five voting yes, one abstaining. Motion carries. I don't know if any of the commissioners are here tonight. Otherwise, they will, uh, meet with clerk to, um, be sworn in at village hall. Alright, citizens wishing to address the.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board thinks it's earned from stakeholders and values to your question. Board strives to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the liberty and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board to demonstrate process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board's act. To the extent of both speakers are addressing an issue, the mayor reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comments. Board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during this public comment period. Robert Opel.
Good morning. Good evening. Thank you for your time today. Oh, I forgot she can't be here tonight, but she helped me put this together. My name is Robert Opel. My wife and I live on Blue Heron Circle in Redding, New. We've both been lifetime Lake County residents. I'm here to speak regarding the Oasis Senior Development that will be discussed later, as stated in the last meeting, to build our home over seventeen years ago, knowing that our property's backyard is adjacent. The property is zoned for residential use. We had a clear understanding that someday this property could be developed with other homes. We have an online petition against this development. It now has a hundred and ten signatures. All ten homeowners who have this facility in their backyard, this proposed facility, affecting their daily lives, property values, have signed the petition. We continue to hear two important topics in meetings related to this proposal. The first regards the landscaping that would be installed to allegedly provide a hundred percent opacity, but this will be in five years' time. This does not provide an adequate solution for the homeowners that will have this building thirty feet from their property lines. If we want to sell our home in the next five years, a construction site in a large commercial building is negatively going to affect the sale of our home. The landscape rendering that continues to be shown at every meeting thus far is a picture of a retaining wall and mature trees, which is only planned for the north side of the building. We still have not seen a clear representation for the east side showing the building, the planned fire lane, and the landscaping. Second topic for discussion is the need for EMS services. The developer continues to downplay the need for EMS services at this facility. From our own personal family experience, we know that anyone who experiences a fall while on blood thinners must be taken to the hospital for proper evaluation, but most likely a CT scan. So we're wondering if this facility will have an X-ray and CT machine and the technicians to run it. Probably not. Most of the elderly US population uses blood thinners, from aspirin to pills to injectables. The Bigford in Yerne was mentioned during the last meeting here. My grandmother was a resident of Bigford. We currently have a close family from there now. We've heard from many that most of these facilities are understaffed. This week I spoke with a Bigford employee who reaffirmed that it's mandatory for any fall victim on blood thinners to be transported to the hospital by ambulance for evaluation. The Bigford employee said ambulances typically occur every other day. Sometimes there's as many as five ambulances arriving per day, while Bigford only has sixty beds compared to the eighty-eight plus proposed by Oasis Senior Living. During a recent phone call with the Antioch Fire Chief, he expressed his concern that this facility would likely overburden Antioch's already taxed nine-one-one ambulatory service. In addition to his concerns, as a former Lake County Sheriff's deputy, I know that ambulances use lights and sirens while entering traffic. These lights and sirens will be a nuisance to nearby homeowners in Redding, New, and the overpromise of a hundred percent opacity in five years will fall short of protecting us from the noise and light pollution. I want to thank you again for allowing me to express our concerns.
Thank you. I have, um, I have five items on the consent agenda, and, um, I was asking, is there any request to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? I would like to move number three for discussion. Number three, I'd like, um, two. Okay, alright, so no objection. Any other board members? Right. We will move, um, items two and three to consent agenda. So they're, I'm sorry, to the regular business. Yeah, the, um, sorry, I did one. It used to make it fairly creepy. Um, we got the, uh, items one, four, and five on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion and a second regarding those items?
So.
Motion trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries for items one, four, and five. Alright, so, uh, we're gonna go to number two, which is on the consent agenda, which will now be the first item in regular business, which is approval of an ordinance adding subsection after section thirteen dash one dash six of the Antioch Village Code regarding baby building permit fees for disabled veterans living in the village of Antioch, Illinois, ordinance number twenty-four dash ten dash fifty-three. Uh, do I have?
So move.
Motion and second. Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Mason. Discussion on this, trustee Pierce.
The only reason I wanted to have the consent agenda is so the public can see what we're doing for our veterans, uh, that are disabled, that we're doing something to, to help them with their building fees, because they've got issues. I just want people to be aware and not have it very.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Item number three, approval of an ordinance amending chapter four of ten oh one of the U.S. Code for Antioch regarding, uh, addressing meetings, ordinance number twenty-four dash ten dash fifty-four. Do I have a motion and a second? Wait, a second, please.
So.
Motion trustee McNeil?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Alright, discussion regarding this item. Um, we'll start with trustee Luther over here.
I, I needed to get clarification on this, Mayor. If you could. Um, the way I'm reading this is that during the trustees' report section of the meetings, that if a trustee would like to state something during that time, he has to submit that in writing the Friday before. So I, I understand if we're submitting actual numbers or some type of data or something that we're, we want to discuss, but I don't know if we need to clarify it more or not, because there's times during that portion of the meetings where trustees use it to, to thank staff or thank people. I don't want them to not be able to do that because of this new collection.
I, I agree. I agree with you. Uh, I'll go to trustee Mason also. Uh, trustee Mason, do you want to talk now or?
No, I'll talk now, because I think this is a violation of First Amendment. I think, I think if, if this was to be passed, I would write my stuff in Latin. Because, because, uh, if something comes up on a Saturday that someone from the public wants the board to be addressed to, that, uh, as a trustee, we should be able to bring it to the board and not have two, three weeks to have to put it in writing when the mayor has the option. He can say what he wants, but the trustee has to put it in writing. When we run a dictatorship, that's not how government works. When government is to bring stuff to the people, to the board, not have to put it in writing prior. So if I was forced this, I would different, use different languages. So you guys would have to figure out what I'm gonna say, but it would be, thank you, AI. This is silly nonsense, and I think it's, it would be, this is unconstitutional that I would have to put, someone's request, they asked me to bring it to the board, that I gotta put a three minute, two minute, I'm allowed a two-minute speech, I have to write it out. So I don't, I don't get paid enough to write a two-minute speech for a citizen for a report. Makes no sense. So first, I would have to have a letter from the attorney saying this is illegal.
Trustee Pierce? Well, I, I think the attorney probably wrote this. Uh, that being said, I have to agree with trustee Mason. I understand the purpose of this. Um, but we just got updates to our packet today. You know, we got updates the other day, then we got the packet on Friday. Our ability to respond to the packet is, is, my opinion, curtailed by this. Um, and, um, I think it's, I understand the purpose of it, and we have a, we have another ordinance we passed a while back, the COVID product, and we just paid relentlessly on that one, because we're trying to control how the board acted. I think the control, and this will cause this as many problems for us. Um, I, I don't think this is, uh, an effective use of our time, and there are times when I want to talk, and I'm probably violating this half the time, so I'm gonna go, go, so I won't violate up in the village board to put in place. Trustee Peters?
I, I just think that this is, um, put in there because this stops that gotcha moment from the board members, or it has, they have something to say possibly about staff or the, something that staff has done or acted or whatever, or maybe even a fellow board member or the mayor, and they don't like what's going on, and they don't, they don't call staff. They don't email staff. They don't try and go to village hall, and they have complete access to village hall, by the way, but, um, to discuss this with the person they have a problem with or the situation and try and get it out. Instead, they want to bring into the board meeting all the drama, and I think that's what this is for. At least, that's how I see it. Um, to stop all of that and give, not embarrass the staff or each other, um, and, and stop the drama. I think that's what this is about. I, I, I could be wrong. Is, am I, am I right or am I wrong or? Is it, am I more in the same right wavelength?
Sure, I'll let trustee Pierce talk and I'll respond to it. Jimmy.
I, I just want to respond to trustee Peterson, because she has some very valid points, and this is probably the reason why this came about. Um, and whether, whether we like it or not, you know, you can't throw the baby out. And the funding that we're writing this to say, well, we want to save them the highest, is something that we should respect and honor, and if somebody says something inappropriate or wrong, the mayor has the gall to stop it. Um, but who chooses what's right or wrong? It has a tendency to stifle speech.
So, um, I guess the intent of this, again, I'm not, uh, I don't take this position like my covert Chicago mayor Chad. Do whatever he wants or tell people, not talk. So I want people to understand that, um, the reason that this originally came up were some, I guess, even staff, um, there were times where there were items that they could have been prepared for at a meeting if they would have known in advance that there's something that's gonna be brought up. Obviously, if a trustee wants to, um, bring up something during a trustee report, uh, regarding, you know, something a citizen has done, or something happened, or congratulations, absolutely, that should not be something that is, um, stifled. It's, I guess, more if a staff member has to do some research or be prepared to answer questions. So there probably could be, needs to be some, you know, revisions to the language, um, in the ordinance that you must do this, or just, you know, I guess, a little bit more, uh, requesting the information to be submitted in advance. That's the purpose, not trying to, you know, change the, the meaning. I love when you guys fight with each other.
No, staff.
That's, that's the best. It makes it interesting for them, but in, in any, that's not why we're. So I think you can make some revisions to this. So if you guys feel like this should come back for another revision, uh, with language that trustees are comfortable with, and give suggestions.
I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting with revisions for defining what's a report and what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Sure. I have no problem with that. So I have a motion and a second regarding the ordinance. Second, table. Yeah, Peter.
Believe in everyone.
Yeah, so, uh, now I have a motion to table.
And if you gotta say what can and can't be involved, if you say it's said, is there gonna be military speech?
No, no, this, and if, no, the motion is to table it to come back with revisions
Right.
on this, and nowhere in this ordinance, and I, I hope the motion passes, but nowhere in this ordinance is a curtail what someone says. It is literally definitionally in time, place, and manner restriction, which is allowed on the first amendment. I'll, we are here for a motion to, I, we've heard your concerns. We will revise the draft in accordance there with, and you'll be, it turns out to was another draft on the wonderful day of October the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Um, but it, it's, we're in a motion.
And I, I want to clarify, like, we, this is not something that, um, each village attorney drafted from scratch. This is something I believe from other municipalities. Again, if it doesn't fit our, if it doesn't fit the sport, the sport, it doesn't pass, or if the language isn't, is, um, sufficient for what we feel is appropriate, then it doesn't pass. That's how this came about.
And I just want to say real quickly, on, on behalf of the staff and, um, and, um, whoever gets surprised with, uh, surprise droppings, um, shame on that trustee.
Yeah, I agree with Scott. Um, alright, so I have a motion. I need a, I need a motion to table trustee Luther. I need a second on that.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, uh, motion to table, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries. Onto the regular business agenda, number six, consideration and approval of a payment that accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Do I have a motion and a second? Boomer, motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee, uh, Pierce and McNeil, McNeil. Um, any discussion regarding this? Are there some items you want, anything on that, items over ten thousand? Um, I believe there's a road, big road payment, which is about
Three thirty.
One, three hundred and thirty thousand, which is, you know, that's two-thirds of this. Alright, uh, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries. Next item, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving insurance brokerage services for the village of Antioch, Illinois Resolution number twenty-four dash eighty-seven. Uh, Jeff, brave, and us on Zoom. Kristen Schultons is in person to answer any questions, and this is regarding our casualty insurance. This is not our health insurance. Yeah.
Uh, so we have been at Gallagher, Erge De Gallagher, uh, insurance for our brokerage services for a number of years, I think, twelve-plus years. So we published a request for proposals for the administration of our property casualty workers count, general liability, and other insurances. There were five proposals that we have received. We have interviewed two of those firms. We have recommended West's insurance. Chief Chow did reach out to other communities that utilize, uh, this brokerage firm, and, uh, they had positive things to say about them, so that is the, the recommendation at this time. Uh, there is no contract, but it's simply a broker of record letter that would be issued, was this, by the board, and as the mayor said, Mr. Ray and, um, Kristen are here to answer any questions.
Alright, ordinance, first step up, so, uh, this is a new item. Any questions? The side of the thing.
Um, I just had a quick question regarding costs. Is it similar in mind to what we've been paying for the brokerage side or?
Gallagher, um, had a fee-based service. This is a commission-based.
We know, if we compared it to last year's, what that would be?
Uh, no, we, it would depend on carrier, just.
Trustee Pierce?
Well, I'm gonna have two questions. Is it normal, the broker, the record letter, and are we basically hiring these guys to go find us an insurance broker?
No.
So these guys are gonna go out and find us insurance that we can afford, so we're, we're only paying for them to do this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Mason, I know you you bettered this a little bit.
I was, I was in a meeting, I was in a meeting, and, um, very interesting that, that they're passing. So they just come through, and they're trapped away in the big void. Can't talk.
Anything, chief?
No, just, just relative to the cost, speaking with some of the other local communities about our size that do use West's insurance. Um, transitioning from a larger broker firm service with a, with a contract fee-based service to the commission-based service, um, over time, they've recognized approximately two percent cost reduction.
It's probably more than that. At the back end, it's probably one point in.
Yeah.
Because they were charged, Gallagher was charged with twenty-two teeth. So it's more than.
Yeah, it was thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, actually.
Oh, yeah. It's more than, if you took it, the, the commission, you think commission savings, it's gonna be probably twenty grand.
Yeah, it is important. I'll tell you with Gallagher and some of our policies that we were carrying, we're also paying a commission in addition to.
Hey, they're paying both. I hold that. There's correct, you have double dip, right?
Any other questions? If not, uh, roll call please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
I'm gonna stay.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one abstaining, motion carries. Alright, next item is consideration approval of a resolution approving a site plan for real property located at the address commonly known as nine-nine-one East Illinois Route one-seventy-three in the village of Antioch, Illinois, Oasis of Antioch Resolution twenty-four dash eighty-eight. Do I have a motion and a second?
Oh.
Motion trustee Mason? Second. Second trustee Luther. Alright, um, I'll ask a discussion on this, as we have public comments. Your items, is there anything that everyone wants to discuss on the side of the dais, or any questions?
I just wanted to ask, we, did we hear from the fire chief in regards to anything, uh, with the calls, like emergency calls?
I don't, I think I saw my gun soon.
Yes, yes, I, I am here actually, your honor.
Yeah.
I have had discussions, previous discussions with, um, uh, John Coke Fair about this proposed development, um, and there was no expression of inordinate, um, amount of traffic or the, inordinate amount of demand on their services. So it's something that was not expressed, you know, uh, by the fire chief. As you know, we spent most of our time talking about a, in the addition of a fire lane to address access for the fire services, but nothing in our conversation in, where he expressed any concerns about inordinate amount of demand on their emergency services.
Any other questions?
Um, this, get me, uh, comments, yeah, trustee Mason, on the, um, on the site plan.
On the, uh, uh, on the site plan itself or the operational plan itself?
Um, I guess it's not really separated in that regard.
Yeah, because you know, right, because I don't know if we, how we separate the site plan versus the operation and the big, use the big rice stands where it's broken stand up on this thing. Is it all hopeful?
Yes, sir.
I've almost been the same. And with, with he's saying, because it's a true statement, so, um.
Yeah, so as far as I understand, they were just wanting to have the site plan, not the business operation portion of it?
So the site, yeah, I get the site plan. So the site plan, yeah, okay, that's fine. The site plan, so the concerns I would have is the same concerns as the broker had. Secondary site, the secondary concerns with the facility is, it starts at a business A, and then all of a sudden, and I don't know, the insurance is, we could get, two weeks later, it becomes business B. And then all of a sudden, the operations change and we get stung. Um, and I don't know how to prevent that, that it becomes different than what, what we voted on, because we've gotten stung so many gosh darn times in the past. We vote for one, one gosh darn thing, and it turns out to be something else two weeks later. So that's, that's my two concern, because an average ambulance run where an ambulance is out of service to the hospital is almost two hours. And that would, and, and chief that should have been down here to give opportunities to speak, um, that would be, if, if, and he is one hundred percent correct on a blood thinner, that they would have to be, they don't, they don't gather a checkup, they don't have a blood thinner. So, um, and I don't know if they, they, they have it. Which is the same item on the door, the stage of, stage of that line, uh, so they would be transported to hospital for a checkup, um, for termination. So that would, that, that would destroy, and, and the fire chief could say, yeah, maybe get more ambulance, we can use more blah, blah, blah. We can increase our tax base, and then it becomes, you can't afford it for tax basis. It's unsustainable for Antioch. So I get what Mr. Opel's saying. I get what I'm saying. Where does it go to the point? People, people can't afford tax increases. I wish, I wish the fire chief was here.
Any, any, um, other questions or comments on this report, roll calls?
I'm having a hard time too now, amongst the blood thinner, um, topic was brought up. Um, the, I do know it's a very serious thing. Um, I think it would feel better if we, the fire chief here, to be able to, um, you know, ask those questions and concerns to kind of seal that part of it, that can, you know, those concerns. Um.
Can I ask a procedural question? Yes. How many no votes would need to overturn the planning zone?
That's an excellent question. So on the, that only, uh, okay, sorry. There are two items out tonight. I'm gonna talk about both of them, even though right now we're only talking about the site plan. I just think now's the time to address both of those issues, right? So to overturn the six O mode of the combined planning and zoning commission for the site plan, it would be taking a simple majority. So the, is the common misconception that all land use states require a super majority to overturn a recommendation? It's not true. This board votes with a simple majority on the site plan. Relative to the special use permit, first state statute in our local code would need a super majority vote. That means that, to flip it, that means that there has to be five affirmative votes to flip the board. So it would have to vote five in opposite to the board to, um, flip it. So you need five, no, no, you, because it's negative. It's, it's normally the other way around. Yeah. It'd be a motion to approve, so you would need a motion to deny. It'd be a motion to approve, so you would need a motion to deny. And it would need five votes. It'd be five no votes. It'd be five no votes because you need to flip it with a super majority. On on the special use, special use.
So item eight is the site plan, which is a simple majority, but item nine?
Item nine, if it's approved, would take four votes or three affirmative votes and an abstention to pass. Round was a special use. Well, that's, that's not a special use. So, but there wasn't, oh. Does it make sense to put it in the reverse order since one has a higher group, one of, one of, one of them usually, one of them, one of them tests, one fails. Generally, yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, it's, um. Let me ask one question. Yeah, I don't think, I think they were just put down there in, um just a random order. Um, so, yeah, you could do, and you could if, if this is gonna go forward, I know trustee Berman asked about having this meeting of the fire chief then. But if this did go for, if there was no objection to changing the order, then that would be, then that would be I can say, you can just ask if there's gonna be objection, you can flip the orders of nine and eight and vote on them that way. And then eight would almost become right because you have the special use. You would need, you would need to withdraw a motion on the table unless a superseding motion came through, such as a motion to table or a motion to adjourn or something. Alright, so Scott?
I don't know.
Can I, can I have a big motion to table both of these agenda items until the next meeting and ask that we invite the police or the fire chief or someone from the fire department to come in and address trustees' concerns about, and residents' concerns about this development?
Yes.
I will check. If, if the, the next meeting will be sufficient for me, as long as the fire department be represented. Department can be recommended, fair to be here. So I have a motion to table trustee Bluthard, all by the six feet.
I hate to say this, but trustee, I don't think pushing the next meeting is gonna change the vote.
I need to, I need to, I don't have a second.
Okay.
Do I have a second on that? Alright, no second on that motion. Alright, so we still have the motion on the table, a motion to approve with a second. I'm gonna call, roll call, item number, uh, number eight, which is site plan approval.
Berman?
Yes, oh, yeah, yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
To approve the facility, the site plan? The site plan? I, I, I'm gonna say no, because I think this is a beautiful facility, but I think it's not in the right place, it's not in the right place.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration approval of ordinance granting land use relief to the property located at nine-nine-one East Illinois Route one-seventy-three, Antioch, Illinois. Special use assisted living and memory care facility, ordinance number twenty-four dash ten dash fifty-six, and a motion to second. Waiving the second reading.
So I'm waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee McNeil, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next item, administrator's report, administrator Gutcher.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple items for the board to be aware of this evening. So staff has been working with the Lions Club on the renovations of the Williams Park Pavilion. They came to the village, met with our team regarding different options for the reconstruction of that. It's one of their community projects, we had worked with identifying the appropriate size type of facility. They were to bring that back to the finance page, determine what their contribution would be to support the improvement and renovations to that facility, so we mark information to come and report in future improvements. We anticipate that our new accounting position will be built next week. We're not quite ready to announce the candidate, few things to work through, but we hope that our candidate will be starting with us next week if everything works out. Our interim finance director, Nick Ducci, is starting Zeta in thirteen tomorrow to begin working on the transition plan, so although there may be times both Nick and Zeta are involved, I just want the board to continue to direct all of their finance-related questions to Zeta, as she will remain our primary finance director through her retirement at the end of December. I hope get an opportunity to notice all the sidewalk improvements that are taking place in the downtown over the last week. I should call the board approved, that is part of the budget and that is a project. We hope to get some good feedback in the businesses now that all the barriers have been removed, we walked and inspected that, it's like, company that we hired did some very nice work for us. Jim and I walked downtown yesterday and I could talk to some folks, and so far the community feedback has been positive. So that's a project that we need to hope to expand in our budgets, improvements in our business district. Our team has a meeting with our architect team and our project management team for the Village Hall project. Um, as like many things that, uh, that try to be built in today's economy, prices are coming in a little bit higher than we anticipated. Uh, so to try to meet the budget that was established by the board, as our guidelines, we're gonna be meeting with them tomorrow to review some options to drive those costs down all within the anticipated budget. One of the, once such options are proposing, just, or as where is, just to relocate the placement of the future village board meeting room. It will still be contained within Village Hall, it's just being shifted in the purpose, that is, I understand it is to not have to move quite as many interior walls, abdominal labor material costs that own it. You may have seen on Facebook, some concerns raised by residents, uh, over a centennial park about possible sightings of rodents. Uh, this month, the board to be aware, the P to be aware that, uh, that Assistant Minister Moran did contact a pest control company. Uh, they did a thorough inspection of the park, there is no evidence of nesting rodents within the playground itself. However, as a preventative measure, the pest control company did apply a non-toxic pet and child-friendly deterrent liquid at the park. So hopefully, whatever is spotted will be deterred from this liquid and won't have any additional tissues at the park. Um, again, one other item that I think was circulating on social media this week, there were some complaints and concerns raised about the gate lashing system of the playground, the new seat plate in the park. Functionally, it works, it doesn't seem that, that maybe it's just easy for folks to use. Uh, there's been a couple of kids that have bumped their heads on it, so suffered some minor injuries, so Director Hyman Public Works is researching options with poll or try to make an improvement to that to address the problems that would seek to be a source, some, some relatively minor injuries. Uh, this week, we are conducting final interviews for our HR coordinator position. So we will have another addition to our staff to fill a vacancy in your, your future report. Then lastly, Amy from IT and I did meet with I three broadband this morning. They let us know that they do plan to begin the process of engineering service to our areas, this will be for a fiber optic broadband service that will be providing alternative to Comcast for our residents. My understanding from discussions with IT, Amy, are that this would offer substantially more speeds. Uh, the cost that I three is, is putting out their, their plans is, uh, recognize substantial savings for both our, our business and our residential customers. It's very early in the process for them, but they would anticipate it all goes well, they would start their destruction project within the village as soon as the snow melts in the spring, just as.
Are you saying I three or three?
I three, I number three, apologize for that. So that would, uh, it's, it's not a TV service, it's strictly broadband services, they operate as a a telephone utility, so that does allow them access to utility easements, but they are more than willing to work with the village on phased approach, but they, again, I think this is good news, it's expand connectivity for our residents that don't have a lot of choice and their broadband service is a new option. And speaking of Amy, it would provide a lot better service for a lot of better connectivity. That, my report is any questions?
You? Alright, um, Louis Clark?
Oh, wow.
Uh, we have, uh, the leak vacuuming schedule has been set with groups. Um, and is scheduled to begin the week of October twenty-eighth, weather permitting. Uh, as it stated in the contract, the connection is done the first four full weeks of November. Uh, services are at the curb, residents are strictly restricted within the range of the curb, not in digits. Uh, any residents concerned that weather affecting leak vacuums, the weather any type of the weather affecting leak vacuums, services are still able to place their leaves in landscape decks for the landscape pickup program, which runs April first through November third.
That's the way we'll do these calls. Okay, um, trustee reports.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Let me write it down real quick here, put my, I just happened to notice today that Public Works was digging a big old hole by sitting apart and was, they were working pretty hard in it, so I think Dennis maybe was stuck in there at one point, I think that's how it's.
Yes, I would go for there multiple times, we had a, a hydrant valve that was, it was water main break, but along the paintball, rusting, where you, they finished out the system, I can't.
Please tell me.
Definitely there, good on that, trustee. You know, I know they did some utility work at Lake Street, do you know, are they gonna come back and patch those?
We will, yeah.
We will, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, trustee reports, alright, they have a motion to adjourn. Trustee, Bluthard, second trustee, Pierce, all favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned at seven fourteen, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Oops, sorry.
Jesse Bluthard?
Here.
McNeil?
Here.
Jesse Pierce?
Present.
Jesse Man?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present, alright, I made our report, I did three at one thing, this is strictly for the trustees. Uh, next Tuesday, next Tuesday at eleven o'clock, um, there is going to be a lunch uh, with the trustees, myself, basically, this is Matt something, we have flexibility on scheduling, but if you're available. Our representative Snyder will be here, eleven o'clock until one or wherever. And we're going to have lunch with him at Oliveary, so if anybody plans to attend, please let Jim Moran know by Friday, just.
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, I won't be able to meet her, but please ask her for the money now if I have to. Put it in writing.
One o'clock?
Eleven o'clock. Alright, Sal said he will give us top match service. I told him we're waiting for some grand money. Alright, we have, uh, regular business approval of the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented, we have a motion and seconds. Oh.
Second.
Alright, motion trustee Bluthard, second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, next item is discussion, discussion regarding a veterans' commission. Administrator Gutcher, so, just a little context on this. Um, you know, as, you know, we have a, a large veteran population in Antioch. I think this is something that's been a long time coming, uh, we've seen some of the struggles both at Village Hall, online, internally, externally, with trying to get this veterans' memorial done. Uh, who's on first, who's on second, get my goal, I think our goal as a village is, this is a village, village project. And we're allowing groups, uh, by regardless, to get this done and to collect as much money from whoever wants to go into this project privately as possible. So with that, uh, Chief Gutcher or Administrator Gutcher, I'll let you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, so just very briefly, uh, as the mayor mentioned, this, this conversation originated out of discussions regarding the veterans' memorial construction. Um, as we started to have those conversations, it kind of came to our realization that we have an opportunity to establish a veterans' commission that's gonna recognize the service of our veterans and help strengthen the village's efforts to recognize the contributions and sacrifices those that serve within our community. And looking to how other communities structure, uh, their veterans' commissions. Uh, we propose what is, is a very early draft of the ordinance that would establish this veterans' commission. Again, the purpose of putting it in your act in front of you is just to give, give you our thoughts, what it could be. Then allow you to have the opportunity to give us feedback, uh, and give the changes provisions as you see appropriate. Really, the purpose of the ordinance is to establish a veterans' commission that will serve as another advisory body to the village board. With the goal of supporting local veterans, veterans initiatives within, within our community. Some of the key functions for the veterans' commission would be to promote programs, raise awareness of veterans' issues facing uh, those that serve within our community, maintaining a veterans' memorial once constructed within the village. Representing the village at veterans-related events throughout Bay County. Recognizing local veteran achievements within the village. And assist with fundraising efforts for veterans' programs and future memorial maintenance. Or to recognize that through conversations with the administrator within Lynn and Hurst brought to light that, you know, once you get this, this monument constructed, there is a need for ongoing maintenance to keep it as beautiful as it may it was constructed. They, they found a lot of, uh, good outcomes through their veterans' commission and helping coordinate, collaborate some of these these fundraising initiatives throughout all the, you know, the many nonprofits within the community. The proposed structure would be seven voting members that would be appointed by the mayor with the advice consent of the, of the trustees. And it would include a member from the Antioch FFW Post forty-five fifty-one and American Legion Post seven forty-eight. Members would serve, you know, we just threw in their one-year terms. However, that's something I think we probably want to stagger in alignment with our advisory boards. And we drafted it as proposed that, uh, commission members would be village residents to get in alignment with with our current commission, uh, structure at the time. And we would assign one non-voting staff member to be the liaison to the commission, help guide through conversations. And then, again, the commission would meet, uh, you know, it could be monthly, it could be quarterly, whatever period you decided is appropriate. And then they will maintain records and submit the reports to the mayor, the village board, for final action and decisions that need to be made. So with that, I think we've all had the opportunity to read through the draft ordinance, we're happy to listen to any feedback, answering questions, and we'll start this process.
Alright, take any comments? Any questions? Jesse Bluthard?
Um, I'm a hundred percent in, in favor of this, I'm actually kind of surprised and embarrassed that we didn't do this earlier. I think it's an important mission. Um, I think the term limits that you mentioned already, I think we need to stagger those and make it longer than a year. And, and I don't know legality of it or anything else, but I wouldn't be against compensation like we do for planning and zoning for, for parks in regards to this commission, um, as well, because I think it's that important, and we want people to feel and we want them to show up, participate, so fifty, eighty bucks a meeting helps do that, I think that would be something that I would be willing to consider. I didn't see any other issues with it, and that being said, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward on this.
Discussion, anything else, or you want to add something to the next agenda? Do you want to add the next agenda for a vote, do you want to tweak anything? Mr. Tazzer? No, no, I mean, um.
I would.
Yeah, but, that's, you never want to talk.
Please, turn the timer on.
Well, I think it's a good thing that we're doing this finally, it's like the veterans' memorial, right? It's long past, this is long past too. And being involved, we're trying to get some things done, I see like a lot of confusion in the township, the village, and I'm hearing a lot of, uh, folks saying, why are we not included? The village and I'm hearing a lot of uh folks saying, why are we not including the township? Why are our veterans or or some folks that have the wrong address not involved or still a veteran, right? And so I would recommend that we probably. Appoint. The commander of VFW, even though he's outside the village, that's what he leads. I lead the legion, right? I think we ought to kind of get township involved and get someone there input because there's over. So there's over five hundred uh. Veterans that we have in all of our. Graveyards, we put flags on them every year. We have a bunch of veterans in this town. And I think we need to show them the respect they deserve. And I think by coordinating this into. One thing where the village is involved and we can kind of get a little direction and help, I think that's something we need. And keep this more organized than what I've seen. Not slamming anybody, but it's kind of been a little up in the air on how things goes. And there's people that. Wanna, you know, I don't think anybody's out there trying to do something bad. I think everybody wants to do the right thing. You know, but we got a lot of this this joint and stuff going on, so I think this would be a good time to do it. I I can't see where anybody would be against it. Anything I could do to help, please let me know.
Any other discussion on this?
I appreciate uh trustee Josiah's word, and it's very important. This like tonight when we pass the waiting fees for disabled veterans on building. Uh we we need to figure out ways to help our veterans and honor our veterans and do good things for our veterans. Uh so if we have this, I would look forward to them finding what more ways to help sites. Just to pat them back and hooker the veterans go provide the business type of approach. I I do uh think that we just went through uh a revision of our park board and and the. We get, you know, the resident residents versus non-resident reasoning. And we hold uh the standard to our other other commissions, we have to hold the same standards to these. I'm saying Lake County doesn't have a veterans commission or the township can put other veterans commission that we have to work with. I just think. Our commissions have the village commissions. If you go for one, you get one. That's just my.
Can I say something? Isn't uh, am I correct? Isn't it state law? That if we have a commission that you have to live inside the village and that's all?
Yes, to know there is one, there are a few exceptions such as. PDB if we have a planning area outside there, but generally not. And that is custom to generally, you know, it's hard to name, so that's why we have to draw. So it's it's an excellent point, trust.
Trustee, you're just, she got you. This was this uh our draft, I know you looked at a couple drafts. But we look at a couple drafts. Is this, is this the closest one to the Lynn and Hurst? There's another time, a couple times.
Yeah, we looked at several. This is a kind of a calculating study of those communities. We drew kind of the high points that we felt would fit ours. Uh it it's very similar to the Lynn and Hurst model. But it's also similar, you know, I think there's a lot of land needs brought up for our park to be as well. So it's kind of a varying of several different communities uh to meet the goals that we feel we have. The Lynn and Hurst has their condition. They do some different things that uh that we do. Likewise with Orland Park, they do things a little bit differently than we do. Uh through several different communities to come up with an idea that we thought would fit again. If there's a, there's differing opinions from the board, happy to look at different ideas, should. I'm not surprised.
It should be people that served. If you haven't served, you shouldn't be on the committee. If you're not a vet, shouldn't be on the committee. Makes zero sense. Someone served, they should get first precedence. They have no idea what it, what the committee is if they haven't served.
And and I think that was the rationale behind why many of these uh. Ordinances draw from their local VFWs, their American legions, their other better associations within the community. Uh you know, certainly it would be. You know, the mayor's prerogative to recommend appointments of veterans if that's what you wanted to see on the commission. But at the same time, I know there's a lot of individuals in our community that may not have veteran status themselves, that are cheerleaders, champions of veterans. I think they're they're likewise may have an opportunity to contribute to the community.
They could be a cheerleader but not a leadership role. They could be a cheerleader, but they should not be in the leadership role dictating how that committee runs.
Correct the opinion. And again, like I mentioned, we're open to any feedback that should be happening. Directional board will make any revisions. I personally support that revision.
Trustee Pierce.
I I think it's very important to have veterans on it because they have a relationship to what they're looking for and what they need. But if some somebody says the Gold Star Mother must be part of that commission, it'd be very happy. That's because she she gave, she sacrificed for 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 the country and so we have to look at the individual.
So would you prefer, um if I may suggest, that preference would be given to to veterans? Or selection of the board, but that there is the ability to appoint to that. As you know, with many of our commissions, I think there'd be resounding support and in interest in the veterans commissions such as this within our community. But as as we've seen with many of our other committees, commissions, volunteerism in some aspects has waned. We had difficulty filling some of these vacancies. So we need to see a silo ourselves very narrowly to who we can select to the commission. Certainly, I think language that would give preferential appointment, you know, status to veterans, you know, as a veteran versus not veteran may be appropriate. Um I just, I would have concerns over our ability to continue to fill seven seats with veterans from within the community.
No, to uh chief's point, we have over two hundred people just in the legion. And when they do meetings, we have ten people that show up. I mean, they're just hard to get out, hard to get there. And we're always juggling the things in the in the village to help the community or whatever. So, you know, just to say, okay, you're gonna do all veterans. And half of them don't show up. It doesn't make sense to have this and kind of a little stupid at that point, right? So I would, I would recommend that we do that and have one, number one, if we did. Leadership from the VFW, we'd have to do something. He's a third year vet. Um he's outside that four digits though.
But that was one of my questions about this. So like, you know. That's a lawyer here, but if we say it, you know, VFW and Legion have a person. That just, that's the only requirement or is it that requirement plus they have a after you're resident? You know, you're saying that that really wasn't clear.
The way it's worded here, it says very clearly. It also has to be in good standing with the organization. It doesn't say anything about the leadership of that organization. So it would be up to those organizations to add some other points on. Well, in in addition, I think um. When it comes to veteran versus non-veteran. Um I have no objection to to giving a preference to veterans, but I think there's a lot of people in this community. Myself, for example, and others that are strong supporters of veterans and. Might like the opportunity to serve and offer their help for this this cause that aren't veteran. But I think by, if we just made it all veterans, I think we'd eliminate a big pool of people that would be willing to contribute and honor their service and. And do things for our community. So I would be against limiting it just to veterans, but if you wanted to add something about a preference or. To to someone that served, that's that's your prerogative as the person that would appoint these individuals, but. I think it should be open to all. Um and I also, we we had this discussion multiple meetings, multiple times about residency, and I don't see a reason to change that for one person just for this. That's how we got into this situation in the first place is is they were bending rules to allow someone to be on a commission who, you know. I don't wanna, I don't think we should do that at this point. Um it is a, it is a village commission. It should be a village resident that serves on those commissions.
Yeah, back to the point with chief and and. Mr. Jazzy, I. It should, the veterans should have presence for being them if they've got some sort of qualifying reason and ability or skill. That they need on the commission, that'd be another um thing that they check out. And because that it is hard to get volunteers, I mean, the VFW and the bingo has three members there on the bingo. And, you know.
Brent, um did, did I understand you correctly? You said that the VFW or the. They would make a recommendation or they would appoint?
Well, it mentions here in the way it's worded, it says just one of the voting members showing his standing with the VFW and one with the. Or more, um it doesn't mention anything about it. It all boils down to the mayor appointing them.
Right, that's what.
So I mean, the mayor work with whoever to figure out from those organizations to appoint, I guess, but it doesn't specify that it has to be the leader of that organization.
Okay, okay. That's all. Just out of curiosity, do we know how many? Change this to probably be a question for you. How many we have um as far as veterans in? The village and how many veterans in the township?
Anything else? All right, so we will move this to the next meeting. Um based on the items we discussed tonight and the agenda, we may flip off next week to the cow. There's some short discussions and then vote on these items.
Yeah.
Seems like there's not much regular business going that that meeting could, would you like to bring this back? To another cow mayor since there's substantial revisions to be made?
Yeah, we'll bring it to the cow, we'll we'll flip flop the meeting six times so we can knock it out, make sure it's comfortable.
All right, any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, do I have some uh? Thank you. Do I have some reports here? Community developments.
Yes, um yes, thank you, your honor. I wanted to give the board a update uh with regards to the last planning commission. Um your honor, um the la- last planning commission, we had two matters which were considered. And the first was a proposed new lighting ordinance. Um there is a, some lighting regulations in our site plan review. But the village does not have a standing lighting ordinance. Uh so based on further discussions with the planning commission, um. They did recommend approval of a new uh lighting ordinance that will be coming before the village board at our next village board meeting. A second matter which was considered by the um planning commission at our last meeting was um the Jamie Patrick concept plan. That's a proposed um concept for a new seasonal outdoor market at the corner of, it'll be the northwest corner of. Uh Main Street and North Avenue. Um there was support for that, so that concept. On a very conceptual level will be coming before the board at your next board meeting. Uh as relates to actual pending cases, I wanted to give the board an update on Brown Road. Uh real progress is being made on Brown Road. Um we anticipate that the road will be hopefully completed. Uh with asphalt and a temporary access point uh at the end of uh potentially mid or end of November. As you all know, Mr. Scarpelli and Kia dealership is hoping to opening, open up their new dealership. Uh at the end of the year, end of December. Uh so we anticipate uh there'll be full access on Brown Road. Subject to I D A approval, getting a full access permit uh sometime in December. Uh the second matter uh is Starbucks. Starbucks, the Starbucks that was approved for Route fifty nine. Um just adjacent to the Ace Hardware is actually in for building permit and engineering uh review is very close to being completed. We anticipate that that new Starbucks will be breaking ground um sometime, hopefully within the next month or so. Uh and also with regards to development, um phase four, if you've not been down to the Clublands. Phase four of the Clublands uh is well under construction. They're moving dirt. Um and on a very permanent basis, putting new infrastructure in on that last phase of Clublands, as you all know. Lenar Homes will be building um three hundred and forty seven new homes starting next year. Um and as relates to Clublands, I wanted just to let, give the board an update that um. The clubhouse finally, we're seeing real progress in completion of the clubhouse. As you know, there are a number of numerous delays. Uh with the completion of the clubhouse, but if you have an opportunity to go out to Clublands. You can see that finally are, they're putting siding on the clubhouse. We're hoping that the pool deck will be poured next week. Uh the grading is being completed and black dirt is uh being spread throughout the site for future landscaping this autumn. So finally, we're seeing some real progress with the clubhouse. And that concludes my briefing, your honor.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, uh Director Torres. Thank you, uh police.
Good evening. Uh so Flo, our service, well, this dog was uh. I called home the police department last night. Uh we were gonna bring her in tonight, however, uh she's still getting acclimated. The officers, we did some training this morning, so I think that's for meeting. We're gonna bring her in here. Already talked was the parts about bringing her in preschool. Um some community events coming up for the treat the streets, still the old parade. And then the the WC petty bad had a lot of um weekend events for Ross.
Thank you. All right, I do have a new request for executive session. All right. No executive session, so I can take a vote adjourned. Peterson, second trustee McNeil, all in favor? All right, the meeting is adjourned at seven forty seven P M.